It being Monday, the twelfth at six oh four P M. Uh, I would like to call this meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District to order. Um, present are trustee Dunn.
Yep.
Trustee Mack. Both of our esteemed fire chiefs, our attorney, and our esteemed trainer, Mr. Smallwood. And with that, all members of the public attendance. Call attention, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bruce, before you can go any further, you have to nominate a president. If that's you, then you have to nominate enacting secretary. And for that.
For today's meeting, since the president is out.
You want to rock, paper, scissors?
I nominate you to be president for the meeting.
For the meeting only?
Yes, for the meeting only.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, and I'm going to choose to be the acting secretary.
Sounds good.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So noted, I would put that aside. Thank you, great call. I forgot completely about that because we don't do it very often. Okay, next item, uh, consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of the Rockland Fire Protection District for, um, Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I have read the minutes, I have no comments.
Same thing, I've read them earlier. Everything looked, everything looked fine to me.
Alright, uh, as such, I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes.
One second.
Voice vote?
Aye.
So, yeah, so, yeah, that would be trustee Dunn, yes. Trustee Mack, yes. Absent trustee Alonoski. Alright. And that takes us, and I'm a little bit spread. We are here all over today, which is a little bit, which was not what I was expecting. I was expecting a couple of members of the public, uh, so that's, maybe they're gonna be watching this on, on television later. So with that, why don't we do the fire chiefs report?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sure. Um, so I believe Chief Rick and I, uh, shared our monthly reports in a few days with each other. Hopefully you had a chance to review them. On the Libertyville side, for the month of April, we had, uh, nine total calls, seven EMS calls, one service call and one, uh, call that was canceled and routed. Um, the times are on the backside, uh, from your review. Of course, uh, there's, there's one that has a unusually long response time, that is, uh, just because multiple calls going on. Different, actually, Lake Forest covered us on that. Um, so occasionally this happens, this is something that we try not to, uh, not to happen very often, but of course, we're not always available in our stations because forty percent of our calls on a regular basis are concurrent calls in nature. So either a different station covers that district, or fortunately, a different department covers the district which is, um, Norwood.
So, so what was the, the backstory on that one? Was that out of Station Three and Three was out?
No, this, this is, are you?
I'm referring to the one you're talking about.
Well, okay, so this one on Libertyville, so just, just so you understand, there's a forty-six K and a forty-two K. The tracks split that, right?
Yeah.
So forty-two is Lake Forest, forty-six is Libertyville, and that's how we differentiate the different calls. On this one, it was a multiple call situation where Station Three was outrunning a call already. And so may, a lot of times, we'll either, if there is a Libertyville rig in the area, we'll respond, but more, more than often, more often, it's an automatic response with Lake Forest. And the other way around too, if Lake Forest can't cover forty-two K, it's automatic, it's an agreement that we have that, uh, Libertyville will cover with an ambulance. We do this on a regular basis, just because of those concurrent calls. Um, so if, in a way, two departments are covering both of them. But unfortunately, these abnormally long response times happen when there's concurrent calls, either on one department or both departments are running their asses off, excuse my French. Yesterday, we ran over three calls on Mother's Day. Uh, today, we're running, I'm not sure exactly how Lake Forest did last weekend, but it is, we're just busy this time of year, you know, so we do our best to try to keep our stations in quarters with trainings that used to happen, uh, as a shift training. Now, we try to do company trains, or we bring the train to Station Three, just to keep us in quarters as much as possible. But sometimes, one slips through the cracks and there's an unusually long response time, which is unfortunate. But we always follow up on it, just to make sure everything, uh, was handled appropriately, there wasn't any adverse effects because of that unusually long time. So, and a lot of times, it's a cool one, there's a collaboration, we can call our friends or our neighbors countryside. We rely on Muddeline and Countryside quite often to cover some of our calls too, so we all rely on each other in this area, so.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's the story on that one. I can find out specifically, uh, I, I, what it is, but.
So, and, and there's one we're gonna get to that happened in, I always get this backwards. Forty-six K is south of the tracks, right?
No, forty-two there.
Okay, I never did that right. Um, only been doing this for a long time. So, yeah, I mean, there's one, I know that we've gotten a lot of inquiries about, uh, south of the tracks. Uh, I was just curious, I saw that, and to be real frank with you, I was looking at that while I was, uh, sitting over in the waiting room, and normally, I look at these several days in advance, because if there's anything that's gonna, I, I don't wanna blindside people in meetings, go, well, what about this? Well, you know, I don't expect you to know the, the, for instances on every call that happens.
We, we're aware that most likely, these types of calls will come up during conversations, so we try to have as much information for you as possible, so you can answer to the people that are asking you about these, right?
So I was, I was just curious, you know, if, if, uh, so it sounds like either the company was out or the equipment was out.
Yeah, the, the company at Station Three is a company of three.
Yeah, it's jump company, right?
Very rarely, we might have four people there, but it's very rare, that's when we're at full staff, nobody's on vacation, nobody's hurt, nobody's sick, all that stuff.
Which hasn't ever happened.
Especially this time of year, but most likely, it's a jump company, so they could be coming back from the hospital or at the hospital, you know, or they could just be on another rescue call.
Yep. Just curious, you know, what, yeah, from that, all that hard work, but.
Okay, uh, as far as, uh, news from the departments, uh, this is a good time of year, May is always a lot of fun, because we start planning for the festivals that are happening. Um, just to, uh, just so you can have a, you can jot it down on your piece of paper. There's a first responder public safety expo at, uh, Gurnee Mills, it's an annual thing. Uh, for the past two or three years, we've included law enforcement too, because they, uh, they were upset because they couldn't play with the fire department to the expo, so we invited law enforcement, which has made the expo so much better. It's a collaboration, it's attended, well-attended by many people in the county. Um, it's May seventeenth, from eleven to three o'clock at Gurnee Mills. Uh, you can't miss it, it's in one of the front parking lots. Uh, you'll see all the apparatus, uh, usually a department brings one apparatus, uh, police and fire represented. And then there's vendors as well, and there's food. Um, it's a great, uh, day to spend with your family. If you have kids or grandkids, bring them out there, um, and just, we showcase our vehicles, and then there's also some, uh, displays as well, and some, like, we do a high angle display with the ladder tower. And the nice thing about the expo also, there's a tunnel of towers, a professional display that travels the nation, and we've secured that for the past two or three years, so that'll be on, on that day as well. Uh, Libertyville Days is June twelfth through the fifteenth, that's always a lot of fun. There's a parade associated with that too, and then there's live music, uh, there's plenty of food, so that's always a lot of fun if you're looking for something to do, uh, that weekend. And then we have a Memorial Day, a small Memorial Day parade, and then just, uh, a few words from the mayor and from our VFW, um, on May twenty-sixth as well, to celebrate Memorial Day. Outside of that, just, uh, you know, just doing a lot of training, I was looking at our training numbers, and it's amazing how many hours we train on fire and how little hours we train on EMS. But in a way, if you think about it, that's how it should be, because majority of what we do is EMS, so naturally, you're better at EMS than fire, right? So you train the most on things, the low-frequency type things, right? So I was just looking at those numbers, it's, uh, if, when our calls were trained.
Thing I, the thing I have noticed is every time there's a real, honest, even structural fire, gosh, oh, golly, everybody rolls on that just to get their sign-offs done.
Oh, yeah, that, and you know what? As far as morale, a structure fire that brings multiple stations, multiple departments together, does numbers for morale, it's, it's amazing. It's like a, it's, it's, it might sound weird to, um, to some people, but it just gets everybody working together for a common cause, and as long as the outcome is good and nobody gets hurt, then it's just a feel-good moment, you know? For, for us, maybe not necessarily for the homeowner and resident.
But, but, you know, that's what, that's what farm and sign-on can do.
Yeah.
That's part of that. This is what you train all the time, you don't get to do it all the time, so it's that opportunity to showcase it, to enjoy it, or the excitement side.
That's the one Libertyville.
Alright, for us, uh, start departmentally, we are, um, actually, you know, week two is, tomorrow's week two of our Citizens Fire Academy, and I do feel like this is something that, it's a cool opportunity for really anybody that we cover, and I, I want to look in a ways to understand the Rockland side of stuff, because I don't think you probably have had anybody from the district participate, maybe you have, and I just don't know of it, but either way, I don't know, you've done a great job communicating or utilizing social media, something to kind of get it off to your residents if anybody has an interest. So I do think that after this year, um, it'd be a good thing just to kind of keep an eye radar for next year, to kind of see that when this does come up, how do we make a better notification for your residents as well? Because you guys obviously have as much input in some of the operations and things that go on, and a lot of the understanding things that we talk about at our meetings, just to understand how the department operates, I think it would be good.
What's, what's the time commitment on that?
So we're six weeks, yeah, so it's six weeks on Tuesday evenings from six to nine P M, ballpark, nine, nine thirty, something like that. So it's typically, we're starting sometime mid-May, ending in June, so we try to do it, it's a little bit nicer out because of all of our practicals, we do write at the station outside, we do car applications, we do a live burn, we do training for extinguishers, we do a couple of demonstrations with our vehicles, let people, you know, push buttons and pull levers, which is kind of fun, but obviously, a little bit better when the weather starts to get nice.
What kind of turnout do you guys get for that?
They've been smaller, and that's why I give you a good opportunity to reach out to you guys. Um, this year, we'll have nine, and I think last year we had eight, and we've done as many as sixteen in the past. And it's a good number, it feels a little small, the answer to you, the amount of effort that goes into it, it'd be nice if we could get a bigger group, because I think we can handle it. Um, but at the same time, honestly, if the people are, the people that show up, like, it's still eight more people that.
Would you rather have eight that are fully committed than having ten?
Definitely.
Or don't show up?
I do think a smaller group, sometimes you get a little bit more engagement as far as some of the conversations.
Oh, absolutely.
You get to know them a little bit more, and they get to ask a few more pointed questions that don't necessarily come up in the groups, and that they may be kind of afraid to ask in, in bigger forums, but it's a good opportunity. I, I, as much as it's the community outreach side of things, and, you know, getting people in our doors, there is just some of those weird questions, you don't realize people don't know until they're, they're asking that question. You just assume some of that stuff is, you know, public knowledge, and not even, you know, the ins and outs of our budget. It's like, why does a fire chart show here, or why, why did I see them both doing whatever that was? And it's just things you would think people would maybe know, but we're so used to it, you don't realize that there's those kinds of questions. We do have, um, I've mentioned a few times in the past, but our paramedic students now are officially in their, um, what we call like our ride time phase, so they're, and they're back third of class right now, which is great, but, you know, we're gonna have a few more people on an ambulance showing up places because they have to get extra ride time and have extra patient contact. So they actually, at times when they've been acting as a second on a vehicle, they're gonna be acting as a third. Truly as like a, here's your chance to be the student piece of the, the class. So we're hoping that goes really well, um, they're hoping it ramps up quickly, I think they're tired of the extra time commute, they've been doing it last year, and we're looking forward to getting them fully qualified. Uh, our application process is still open, so if anybody's still interested or knows anybody that's looking to, to apply, that is still open until the end of the month. Um, there are a couple of, um, requirements as far as having fire or medic involvement in some sort of experience there, which is a little bit different than we've had in the past, but at the same time, we're trying to cast a little bit more specific net because we just can't take the capacity to continue to train as many people as we have in the past from scratch. I think we need a, a year or two to let our people train on shifts in our department, rather than just breaking out new people all the time that don't have any training whatsoever, I think it's gonna be good for us. Um, I do, you know, from the report side of things, we had, you know, our typical twenty calls, mostly EMS calls. We had a call that was just below that ten-minute threshold bubble, um, it was a non-emergent response, but in general, I think that we kind of stuck to most of our normal standards. Uh, and I'm happy to start by letting you ask a question, or if you want me to kind of guide through, I know that there's the one call any question that we should definitely dive into, and I wanna make sure people understand and go with it, but, um, I'd be happy to let you either lead or just have, have the opportunity to tell you guys about it.
Well, well, let me, let me give a, a little bit of background for everybody else, because it has absolutely nothing to do with your call. It just got, I was looking at it, and I'm like, oh, okay. Um, there was a call, what, a couple of weeks ago now?
It's over the thirtieth, in the thirtieth, yep.
Yeah, and, uh, which is literally run straight, one street over from my house. And, and I think it's no secret, um, the average age of Norwood residents is a little bit higher than the national average. You kept a straight face.
Must be a nice place to stay.
It is, exactly. At least we think so. Uh, and so, a lot of people with a lot of long memories, uh, and a lot of people that really do as, you know, I wish you only were here, but we have residents that are long, you know, long associates of the fire services. So, uh, I got stopped when I was out for a walk one evening, um, not once, but twice, actually, um, by people who said, oh, I wanted to ask you about that, as though, and which is why I'm so sensitive to playing gotcha games with people. Like, I know what happened, I know a little bit about it, because the chief reached out, gave us a heads up, I can't answer your questions, and I suggested that they show up tonight, obviously, they did not. Uh, so that is the background, I did reach out, um, just to give you a heads up, so we could kind of walk through it. As you guys know, I think, I, I come on the hazmat side of the universe, so I don't deal with the same kind of things, but I lived and died with run times too, so I was like, okay, let's just do a hot wash like we used to do, if you wanna walk through it one way or another. Um, however, you've got to organize this fine.
Sure, and again, if it doesn't answer all the questions, please let me, you know, fill in the gaps as they go. Um, to kind of set the stage, it was in the afternoon, uh, about, you know, our first call of that, that time period came in at, at one fifty. So there were two calls to Lake Forest that came in first. So at one fifty, we had an ambulance call, um, that required our ambulance and engine from Station One. And then at, uh, two oh three, so just about thirteen minutes later, we had a second ambulance call that then emptied Station Two, which we run as a jump company. So all of our units, including our battalion, were actually on the road on calls by just after two o'clock in the afternoon. At that time, our battalion chief, who's our shift commander, made the decision to call for what we call change of quarters. So what we do is we reach out to neighboring departments and say, we've emptied our entire capacity to run calls here, we have no vehicles, no personnel left. Can you please start a non-emergent ambulance our direction, just in case we get something? It's change of quarters, happens all the time, we do it with Libertyville, with Countryside, with Deerfield typically, is like our, our station groupings that we go from, and it's the help your neighbor kind of setup, it's a plan that's been in place for a long time in the fire service. The idea is to get that vehicle moving your direction, so that if that third call or fourth call, whichever one you need to get to, comes in, there's already a vehicle committed to assist in your area. Uh, so that's what happened here, is we had our shift commander, after that second call came in, in Lake Forest, had asked for Countryside to send their ambulance, which is ambulance four twelve. So ambulance leaves from Countryside, starts driving down sixty, non-emergent, they just take their time, and then at some point, they either get to our station and hang out and wait till all, all of our vehicles are available, or they get returned at some point, we free up somebody, right? Hey, you guys aren't needing anymore, regardless of where you're at, turn around, head back, thanks for the help. Um, so on this particular day, our vehicles are still all occupied, committed to their calls. Um, and then at two eighteen, so fifteen minutes after that second call in Lake Forest, a call came in in Norwood. Uh, again, setting the backdrop for that call specifically, one of our battalion chiefs is a resident, and happened to be across the street, out doing something in his yard, and whatever neighbor this was, the wife, I believe, was the one that came over and said, hey, I think something's wrong. Our battalion chief looked over, saw him in the, like, on the ground, I think on his, you know, face down, obviously not looking right. He actually had just some medical equipment in his car that he's had, um, ran to his truck, grabbed his stuff, ran across the street, in the process, grabbed his radio and said, hey, start sending me an ambulance, we've got some sort of medical emergency. Uh, turns out that the person was in full cardiac arrest, and our battalion chief put on an AED and actually was able to shock him twice, and was doing CPR. Um, in that whole process, as this thing is happening, our vehicles are still committed, so I understand that there's just some question about now who's gonna help respond, and whether it's in Lake Forest or if it's an ambulance going to Lake Bluff, or if it's in Norwood, it doesn't really make a difference. That third ambulance now for Lake Forest becomes the Countryside ambulance. So even though the sticker on the side says Countryside, there are primary response ambulance for this next call, regardless of where it's at. So by that point, um, you know, luckily, the things work out the way that you hope that they do, and Countryside was already in our district, they were either on sixty or forty-three, one radio, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure where they started. But when that call came in, our dispatch initially dispatched them as our ambulance, as a Lake Forest ambulance to go to this call. Um, our battalion chief had actually reached out and said, make sure we get an engine, because he knew it was a full rest, that's where Libertyville ties into all of this, they're the, the second vehicle into our district, just like we're the second engine for a similar call to theirs. And then he actually had asked for Lake Bluff to also come, um, just knowing that we needed some manpower, we were already running short in Lake Forest. To get to those vehicles all arriving on scene, so again, just kind of looking at what, we, we have those earmarks of like, what is a, a typical response time, what's our, our benchmarks for all those things? The Countryside ambulance already being on the road and either heading, you know, east or north, actually made them come in below our average, which worked out really well. It just so happened, our battalion, after hearing it was a, um, a full arrest, the battalion that was working in our response vehicle, left the call he was on to meet up and try and assist up in, um, in Norwood, and happened to see in his rearview mirror as he's driving Countryside like right behind him. So as he made the turn, he made sure Countryside knew which street to turn on, they arrived on scene within, um, the inter-rout on scene was under five minutes. So again, to me, this is actually, as unfortunate as the entire situation was, I don't think it could've worked out any better for the way that, you know, the system is supposed to work about getting help, and when you, you're depleted and you're asking for help from your neighbors. To me, it all worked out great, and then obviously, with Libertyville being able to follow up, and Lake Bluff being able to follow up, we have plenty of hands on scene. Um, and just from what I understand, the outcome is positive, and this is one of those situations where we had the right people at the right time, luckily, our battalion chief was across the street, I, I think he genuinely made the difference to save a guy's life. And we're gonna do our best to, to coordinate, we've already reached out to the hospital about some sort of a heart savior reward. These moments, as much as you'd like to say it, these things don't happen that often, where you get this kind of a call, regardless of the age of the person, where you have somebody's heart stopped, wherever they're at, and you actually get the opportunity to impact that life and have them walk out of the hospital, you know, whether it's eighty percent, ninety percent, or a hundred percent fully functioning, the fact that they're gonna be able to go out and spend more time with their families, that's really what this whole thing is about. And I think that, um, that the battalion chief and then obviously the crews that were able to get there and help out the process genuinely made a difference, which I think really is the big picture of this whole story, so.
Yeah, it's funny you say that, we've actually had, to my sure and certain knowledge, three of those incidents, um, in the last five years or so, where it's been, it's been somebody, um, who lived in the neighborhood that was, either worked for either one of your departments that responded, and, you know, I've never met a farmer that didn't have half their turnout during their.
He's one of them, yeah, and that's a good thing, I mean, it's, that's a credit to him that he takes, you know, that role, not just seriously, but I mean, it's part of his heritage and DNA. Um, to me, if you get to do that once in your career, that's, that makes it, and, you know, you, hopefully, you get more opportunities to have that kind of an impact, but if you're able to do that once, that's what it's all about. So I think it's pretty cool, and I'm really happy for him, I'm happy with the family, and, you know, we hope to, to be able to follow up down the road and maybe get an opportunity to get, I, I'd actually reach out to, to chief and just, if we could get those crews together at some point, and just go say hi, you know, that chance to shake someone's hand, I don't know, I've done, you can't explain it.
Yeah.
It's just really cool.
This is, just to add in, so this is my neighbor, who this happened to. Um, so I was actually the second person on scene doing CPR with, okay, with battalion chief. Um, I have since talked to his wife, I actually just talked to her yesterday, um, and he is going to be starting physical therapy, um, and that started actually today.
Good.
Um, so, still no E T A on when he's gonna be home, but progress looks good.
Means that there's a potential unharmony, and that's.
Yes, exactly.
That's the plan.
So.
This is a system working at its finest right here, but how it's intended. Kudos to the battalion that was on duty to call, enjoy it, um, to call a change of quarters, because sometimes that gets missed. In the, the chaotic, multiple call situation where you're being pulled in different directions, a lot of times, the battalion delays or just forgets until he's prompted, so maybe call a change of quarters, right? So kudos to, it seemed like it all worked out really well.
So, I was gonna say, go ahead. I was just gonna say, so, so I'm not quite able to announce.
I know, I said a lot too.
Let me, let me, let me run by this in, 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 you know, my little ping ring. So we got, Station One gets emptied at one fifty.
Correct.
Uh, Station Two gets emptied at two oh three.
Correct.
Sometime shortly after two oh three, we call for change of quarters, and then the call actually comes in.
Two eighteen.
At two eighteen, yeah.
And then that, that part of it, I don't know if that's the, um, the time, the radio communication from our battalion to dispatch, or. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, like, I don't know the time that he went down, but this is when our call was created at least, so I don't know.
I know it was with, I know it was in, within like a minute or two of that at most.
Good.
I'm not sure, the details were fuzzy at the time, because I didn't know if she actually called nine-one-one or if, uh, cause radioed it in.
Okay.
Um, that I wasn't sure about.
I know those.
But we was.
It's hard.
But I was, I had run to the grocery store real quick, was on my way home, pulled into the driveway, and saw him doing CPR. So I jumped out of my car and started doing two-man CPR with him.
Yeah.
Um, country, just like you said, Lake Forest battalion chief, uh, on shift, showed up pretty quickly after, maybe two minutes, three minutes after I'd gotten there. Um, followed immediately by Countryside, um, followed by Lake Bluff, followed by Libertyville.
Yep.
So it was, it was nice, because Lake Bluff showed up with three paramedics and an E O T. Um, and then Libertyville by that time, there wasn't any room around, even around the patient to do much, so. Um, but no, I think everything turned out really well. Um, and I think the only, the only question I had was, the reason I sent you that email, um, earlier, asking about the specific Libertyville response times to that, is because I only saw the Lake Forest times. So I was just curious to see what, if there was any kind of delay in dispatch or anything like that. Pretty, pretty close.
I have our CAD notes.
Through our two-year call?
Yeah.
Um, I can find out.
Okay, yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
I can just, I can look real quick to see if, it may not be, because this is, you know, just typing, but I may not specifically have. So here was, our battalion got on scene at fourteen twenty-six, so two twenty-six. Uh, Countryside ambulance at fourteen twenty-seven, five twenty, which is Lake Bluff at fourteen twenty-seven, and then four sixty-three at fourteen twenty-eight. So again, I, I know that that clock.
Yeah, it was, it was like.
But it, it was a two-minute difference between our battalion getting on scene and.
Yeah, it was, it was over.
The next three vehicles, including Libertyville, getting on scene, so, um, it was quick all around. I mean, I'm, again, you hope that when everything goes wrong.
Right.
That everything works out the right way, right? Like, this is the point where the system worked the way it was supposed to, I think it's.
Yeah, and this was best case scenario, because, I mean, there was an A D on scene immediately.
Exactly.
Which is, I mean, was that everything? It was everything at the same time.
Oh, definitely.
And I'm only asking, maybe it's my neighbor, so I'm being asked quite a bit, so I'm not sure.
And I know it's just, the reason piece of this, it's unique that it wasn't the Lake Forest ambulance, and I know that that's part of the question. Just helping people understand, it wasn't us, because effectively, Countryside was our ambulance.
I totally get the change of quarters, maybe.
Yeah, and I know not everybody does, but that's, that's how it works. Unfortunately, that third call, sometimes it ends up being more difficult to get that kind of help. Fortunately, Countryside wasn't busy at the time, he had a.
Like, like Drew said, kudos to your battalion chief on duty for recognizing that immediately, because I know that doesn't happen all the time. So. That, that Countryside ambulance, or ambulance being in route, probably meant, could've meant.
The same minutes, the minutes are making a difference.
Yeah.
So really, the take-home for the people that were questioned, ultimately, the call went in at more or less two eighteen, and there was an ambulance inside the site at two twenty-seven.
Uh, twenty-six, I believe.
Twenty-six?
I just think I'm a little wrong.
I guess I did a little up. So I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't have the seconds, I just have the minutes, but.
I think you said battalion residents.
At two twenty-seven. From the, the time that the call was told down, correct?
Yeah, so, I mean, any way to slice it, and, oh my gosh, you know. So, I mean, any way to slice it, and, oh my gosh, you know, what, one, two, three, four, four units on scene?
Most important piece of that puzzle is the immediate response by the off duty time with Libertyville in hand, and then you helping with CPR.
Hundred, hundred percent.
Because that's exactly what an ambulance, like, immediately on that incident, as soon as they got the call, would've been doing anything.
Exactly, doing the exact same thing, and, yeah.
And just, you know, paint the scenario a little bit differently. Had that not all worked out that way, the Libertyville engine would have been, I'm assuming in quarters, that's why they were dispatched. But the way that that IAG is set up, it would've actually been their ambulance dispatched first, backed up somehow by somebody else. So your engine getting dispatched was simply in lieu of us having another company covering our district in the process.
Right, because you guys are, you guys are in the picture.
Right, and I say, say Countryside's out of the picture, just for whatever reason. Again, there is still, there's more to that process. The next fallback is still that Libertyville backs up Lake Forest and vice versa in your district. So there's always, it's ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, to me, it's a continual process.
And you're, you're taking the next question, right, which is, and the rebuttal to that, you know, and again, we're the one that's responsible, the next responsive, had, had you not called for change of quarters, for whatever reason, right, wrong, or indifferent, Libertyville was still on scene less than a minute after that, or about a minute after that. So, I mean, again, and I, I cannot, you know, I cannot fault anybody for how this all went. I think it looked great, and you're right, I mean, the fact that, you know, we can't all be so fortunate as to have a fireman living, who has an AED sitting in his trunk, living across the street.
One quick question, so if we were in a scenario where, let's say, that call did, let's say, you couldn't get a change of quarters or something like that, and you guys did come with, you jumped from three with the ambulance. In a situation like that where manpower could be necessary, do you guys have anything where you would call Lake Bluff proactively, or is there anything built in to do anything like that?
Yeah, it's all built in to me. There, each, each type of call is a run card, and it's all built in, so you don't have to make those decisions based on, and what I'm gonna do, looking into the times that for Libertyville, I'm gonna see if we were even in quarters at the time.
Okay.
You know, some of the times we'll come with an ambulance to a mutual aid like that, you know.
You don't start fire.
Yeah, right, so, and seventy percent of our calls are in the back of the ambulance. So if you're gonna take an engine or an ambulance, if you had the choice, you would, you would take your ambulance, because you have all your tools with you, even though you might not need to transport it, right? So I just wanna make sure that we were in quarters, and if we weren't, if we were coming back with the engine somewhere. So I just wanna get all that information correct before I just start speculating. But yeah, in a situation like that, if there was no change of quarters, we would be the next up ambulance, and then there would be an engine from somewhere, built into the, into the run cards to back this up. Because for any full arrest, at least for us, there's an engine, an ambulance, and a battalion coming.
So was it Libertyville ambulance or engine that was on site?
Engine.
Engine. It says he had the wagon, was probably out of it. Who knows?
And they might've been, they might've been somewhere else, or?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Awesome. I think that answered every question that I've, that I've answered.
I think it's one of those unique calls, it's not the run of the mill. I totally understand why somebody's wondering, you know, why there's these different stickers on the side. It makes a lot of sense, but I hope that that, you know, helps, especially people that are a little bit concerned about what happens, this could happen anywhere, and at any given time, we have Libertyville coming into Lake Forest, or vice versa. I mean, this, this happens all the time, and people don't necessarily realize it, but it's good for people to maybe now understand some of the lie behind why you might see different vehicles driving through certain towns, you know, it's not just the hospitals.
That is something that, I don't know how we can do it, but I think we need to work a little bit more on education in our district, because.
I'd venture to bet that it's not only our district, I'd venture to bet that you get the same kinda questions from anybody.
I wonder, certainly, I say that only because in a lot of my, I, I still have people that come to me and think that, you know, that there's equipment sitting in this building.
Not that we can play with.
Through those faults of their own, right, they just assume, because it's a fire station.
They, they assume, or they were here at the time when all the changes happened, I don't know. And then I wind up having to have the discussion of, you know, what happened, how it happened, and why we have what we have today, and why it works, and why a lot of people work really hard to make it work. But, you know, it, it does get a little frustrating sometimes, especially with some of our longer residents, because they, you know, they, in their minds, they said how things worked twenty years ago. Well, things have changed a lot in twenty years, so.
Answers all my questions.
And yeah, I thank you, and if you are gonna give some sort of, you know, a meetup or a ceremony or something like that, please give us enough opportunity, I'd like to attend.
Thanks. No, we will, and really, it's gonna be up to the patient, the patient's family. It's nothing that we wanna impose or take away the privacy or any of those things. It's more, it's the opportunity to meet and say hello and get to shake someone's hand when something like that happens, it's just a really unique experience, and it's very rewarding for everybody, so.
Yeah, if there's any reach out to you guys, if you.
So you're across the street?
I live across the street from CAZ.
Which means you're one street over from me, because I'm in Cleveland.
I live next door to the patient, so if there's any reach out that you want me to do. I know I talked, like I said, I talked to her yesterday. She was planning on, she was planning on writing a letter to you guys. So that's all I know of her, other than his prognosis seems to be pretty good right now. Other than that, she's been with him at the hospital, so I think that's too many.
Yeah, that's good.
Got everything that we wanna hear?
One thing I wanna just bring up, I have a meeting at seven o'clock, so unfortunately, if you don't have any other, no questions for Libertyville?
No, you can roll.
Yeah, this is the same night you have the other district.
Right, right. Thank you.
Don't worry, they're not as switch fun as we are.
I'll get you, I'll share the.
Sounds good, perfect, thank you. Thank you, good to see you.
All right. Next up, public comment, the district trustees will allocate time for those individuals who would like an opportunity to address the fire district trustees on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each person is addressing the trustees' ask to limit their comments to a maximum of five minutes. There being nobody present, we will call everyone discharged. And then the next item on the agenda is the attorney's report to the board.
Couple things, three weeks left in the legislative session. The funding bill for Mavis instead, it did not make it out of committee, so that will not happen. Right now, it's expected that everything in Springfield will be pointing towards the state budget for the next three weeks, so, short of that, I don't think there's a lot that would impact the fire district coming out of Springfield. Second thing is, we did receive from the Lake County Clerk's Office, the certification of the EAV and tax levy. EAV a hundred and twenty million, eight forty-five, five thirty-three, and the final district total levy was six sixty-nine, four eleven, seventy-seven, and Carl has a copy of that.
Six sixty-nine, four eleven, seventy-seven?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Next up is the treasurer's report to the board.
Okay, from the balance sheet, as of April thirtieth, which is the end of the fiscal year, the Lake Forest bank checking account was at six hundred and seventy-five thousand, eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. The reserve account is about three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and two cents, and petty cash remains at eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, for a total asset of nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-four cents. So it starts the budget, begins with the final report for the fiscal year. Not a whole lot to say, obviously the IGA came in at exactly a hundred percent, so we know what that is going in. As far as our total income, we're, I think, we ended up about four thousand dollars short of everything we estimated, but we're higher on some than the other things, so that's fine. And that's out of, you know, almost seven hundred thousand dollars, we were off by about four thousand, so that's not a big deal.
I think we can listen to it.
And again, you know, a lot of those are just estimates. And the other thing too is, just to kind of note, because John just mentioned what our extension is, we won't necessarily get that, that's the thing, that's what we, what we're told. But if the county doesn't collect it, people will go into arrears or whatever, then we don't get the money. That's generally why we come a little short, because we put in what the extension is, but we don't always get that in the house.
You have, to your credit, you've given me good education on that.
Yeah, on the building operations, we're covering about sixty-two percent of what we budgeted. District administration, fifty-one percent. So in total, we, let's see, what's the best way to say this? We were expecting to have a budget surplus of about sixty-five thousand dollars. We ended up with a budget surplus of about eighty-nine thousand dollars, or twenty-three thousand dollars more than we had projected, which is also true, I mean, my methodology, you'll see when we get to next year's budget, is to be fairly liberal on things like building maintenance and utilities and stuff like that, because we have the, we have the financial assets to do it, it's just safer to over-budget than it is to under-budget, so.
For sure.
Generally, to end up running a bit more of a surplus than we expect. So that's basically it for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
I will second that.
We'll call the vote, trustee Mac?
Aye.
Trustee Dunn?
Aye.
Onto any outstanding inquiries, Mr. Gerther?
Yeah, on the checks to approve, the usual stuff, Comcast, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, C-Bank, a dollar and eleven, that was a late payment, penalty. North Shore Gas, three hundred and forty-two dollars, how's the Bristol late bill? Legal retention, eight hundred and fifty, ComEd, six fifty-six. You may remember the last two months were like fifteen hundred dollars because of those silly heaters, but we got that under control now, so we're back down to what we were expecting. Lake County Public Works for Water, thirty dollars, North Shore Water Reclamation, pay thirty to get it, pay twenty-eight to get rid of it. And then the compensation for the annual compensation, treasurer's compensation to me for our fifteen hundred, trustee compensation, Marson for fifteen hundred, trustee compensation to Chris Johnson for the part term that he served, six hundred and twenty-five, also for Dan, five hundred, and then for Bruce for four-year, fifteen hundred, for a total expenditures of seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents.
All right, so I actually had that in as a separate one, we really need to do that separately then.
No, we did that last month, so we didn't need to do that this month.
I just, I put that in there, just better safe than sorry. Okay, I'd like to call for a motion to approve. We'll call the vote, trustee Dunn?
Aye.
Trustee Mac, aye. And trustee Melonowski absent. All right, I will strike item nine. We have already discussed the annual compensation for the treasurer, trustees and treasurer. I think I bit my tongue while I was in the MIA. Literally, when you're in there, and the thing's going bang, 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 you know. Okay, discussion regarding the twenty, the FY twenty-six budget, anything new?
I will just pass these out, these, this is the tentative budget appropriation, which we will need to, it should be, it's two pages.
I have two.
Okay, so we have one down the top.
Here, pick that, then I'll pick that.
Okay. So just wanna, you know, kinda run it by you, as you know, we basically do a momentum budget. So this is, this is basically the same as last year's budget, the same as the year before, except for the IGA is corrected, because it goes up each year, we know what that is, so that will be reflected in that. And then also too, by this point, we already know what the, the TORT fund, the liability insurance is too, so that's exact. But everything else is pretty much just our standard, you know, we put in ten thousand for maintenance, twenty thousand for utilities, an extra eight thousand for contingency that we will appropriate, but our working budget will never include that again. That's another safety margin, so that we don't have to reopen the budget should something really go south on us. We can pull it from the contingency fund. On the administration, twenty thousand for legal fees, six thousand for salaries, two thousand for education, so Dan, you can go to the, to Purry or wherever it is this year. Yeah. Off the expenses, five thousand, that we rarely spend much on, read the paper every year or so. And again, an extra twelve thousand for contingency, and again, in case something really goes wrong, primarily in legal, you know, somebody really comes to act us hard. The IGA, and then the liability insurance is forty-one sixty, and that's it. So again, the appropriation would be six hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. But the working budget, because we'll drop off the contingency, what we'll really try to budget to will be six hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight. But, and again, that's about a fifty thousand dollar budget surplus. With the contingency is thirty thousand, so without the contingency is about fifty thousand dollars. So we took in, what the, the extension is, plus the other, the other revenue. We get some significant revenues from, like, the Fire, we get, gosh, close to twenty thousand dollars from that. No, I'm sorry, that's from the replacement tax, the state of Illinois replacement tax, about twenty thousand, we get about four thousand from the Fire tax. And then we also have it including what Mike has been paying us, which is about twelve thousand dollars. And that's why we're, that goes over above what the extension is, and those are our other resources and revenue. So mechanics on this now is, I have written up a notice, which I will email to John to have put in the paper, that will say that this will be posted on the window here as of, like, I think I've got next week, something like that. And that we will have a public hearing prior to the start of the regular meeting in July, because we don't have enough time to do that in June, so.
As the thirty day goes.
Yeah, it has to be thirty days, and it gives about twenty, or something like that. So that's why I wanted to do that this, you know, get this this month. And that's how I'll go ahead and post it, and I will send John the notice, and he can get it in the paper, and then we'll be all set, and we won't have to do anything in June with the budget. And in July, we'll have the budget hearing, and then we'll run into the regular meeting.
Sounds good, all right. Do we need approvals?
It was, not be a bad thing.
Yeah, I think we should adopt the tentative budget, that way we've got the mark started on the thirty days. All right, in that case, I would like to make a motion to adopt this tentative budget as presented without change.
I will second that.
Voice vote, trustee Dunn?
Aye.
Trustee Mac, aye. Trustee Melonowski, absent. Item eleven, other items which may be lawfully brought before the board, I'm not aware of any.
Just a reminder that, I believe it's, yeah, next month, it's June, so we will need to do your board reorganization, nominate your officers.
Have you considered becoming the board secretary?
I have not.
Always seems to be a hard sell. I think I got, I think I got it, because I wasn't paying attention. It's like I know they were voting, and it was me. All right, with that in mind, I would like to make a motion to adjourn at six fifty-two and fifty-five seconds.
I'll second that.
Okay, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.